Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My is back there, got moved. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
How long we would have stood there?
Right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved. Moving on to presentations, proclamations, and visitors, are there any members of the audience or in Zoom that have signed up to speak? Done? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to number four, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. Number five, old business. There is no old business. Number six, uh, six A. Budget committee appointment. Um, there are no reappointments this year, but we do have two applicants in tonight's packets. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Nope, okay. So is there, if there are no questions, is there, it's right here, a motion?
I move to approve Carrie Murphy to the vacant budget committee seat with the term expiring December 31st, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's now appointed. There are motion for the second appointment?
I move to appoint Jennifer Mullen to the vacant budget committee seat with the term expiring December 31st, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jennifer is now appointed to the budget committee as well. Item 6B, West Tech Engineering Services Proposal for the Small City Allotment Grant. Uh, we will now have, uh, the Assistant Public Works Director Matt come up and present.
Good evening. Uh, Matt Etzel, Assistant Public Works Director. Uh, there's a proposal before you for the Third Street SCA Grant Engineering Services Proposal. This proposal is to have West Tech design the Third Street improvements, uh, for the grant we were awarded, the Small City Allotment Grant through ODOT. Included in the packet is a budget for the construction, uh, estimated budget for engineering and construction management fees. And then you'll see the proposal from West Tech, um, everything that they're covering. We met with West Tech when we applied for this grant and so, um, they've already been on site. They've already kind of, um, begin begun the preliminary design work with this, but we wanted to get a proposal in front of you guys so you guys could see the actual cost and what they're, what they're doing. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions from council? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the West Tech Civil Engineering Services Proposal for the Third Street SCA Project with a not to exceed amount of $25,000 as presented by staff.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number C, fencing at Porter Boone. Matt will also present on that.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know, it's almost been a year or longer. Uh, we were donated some property to the north of Porter Boone Park and, uh, doesn't have a fence line. We've had, we've had issue. We had a fire there last, last year in the summer. Um, and we've had issues with, um, people going to and from the park and, uh, the nearby residence property. And we thought it was a good idea to go ahead and fence off the property, the fence prop, or the park property, again, so we can establish a good boundary of where the park stops and, and starts and, um, so you'll see a proposal, um, you'll see three proposals. We, we got quotes, uh, from three different vendors, um, six-foot chain link galvanized fence, uh, nine-gauge fencing materials, so a more, a little bit heavier duty than like your standard residential. Uh, we wanted something that was gonna last. And then you'll also see a proposal from Farmers Labor, um, to clear that area. So there's kind of an existing metal fence that we use in and out of the property line. And we're gonna have that removed along with some brush removed so that they can put the fence in on our property and, um, have a clear, clear line there to do the work. Uh, we did have the, the property surveyed so that we know exactly where our property line is. Um, been in contact with the adjacent property owner and, um, basically laid out our plan and, and what we were, what we were gonna do there. Um, he's in agreeance and he likes the idea. So I think we've communicated that well with him, so he's, he's not gonna be surprised to see a fence go up. Yeah.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
So in the, the Caleb Street District of that block, I should say, or is there gonna be any pathway from that neighborhood to Porter?
Uh, we don't have anything planned at, at this time. This is, um, just to fence off the property. I think there's some possible development near that area that might have some connectivity stuff going on, but right now there's nothing, um, to connect the park through to, to Caleb Street. The, the closest I think we could get was something on 13th, uh, cause where the property ends, it's, it's like right just, um, to the east of 13th Street and between 12th and 13th Street, so.
I have a question as well.
Yeah.
Is the fence, this, this red line here?
Yes, yep, the, the, the red line. So it's about 50 feet from the creek and it goes north to, um, best way to describe, it's a straight line north 915 feet, uh, to the end of 13th Street. So the end of 13th Street, and then there's, there's a little jog in the property line. You can see it in the white lines there. We're not gonna fence that area right now. Um, we don't really see a need, a need to, um, but it's just gonna be a straight line, to separate the park and that neighboring property.
So someone could just walk around the end of it and still go into their property.
Yeah. And we could probably get in addition to, to do that. I don't imagine it would be more than a couple thousand dollars if, if we wanted to go ahead and have that area fenced off as well. There's also gonna be a gap between the creek and the, and the adjacent property owner's property. And we talked to him about that. The fence company recommended not putting the fence right up to the creek. Several different reasons. One, you know, debris could catch on the fence and push it over. That area next to the creek's really soft and so they, they proposed, you know, going up about 50 feet and starting the fence from there. And he's, he's kind of aware of that. Him and I talked about that and maybe putting some no trespassing signs or a gate or something like that across that area that he can move. But as far as putting the fence any closer to the creek on that end, we didn't think it was a good idea. We were afraid it was gonna start leaning and fall over. And then once a little bit goes, the whole thing is gonna start going.
Are there any more questions on this?
Yeah, I got one more. Um, so the, well, we don't know how long the quote is good for.
Um, I, I spoke with the, the, the low bid, um, contact and told him that we were gonna bring it to council. It sounded like fence pricing has kind of stabilized somewhat. Um, I know before, like when we did the dog park, we had to put a deposit down within like seven days of the quote because the fence market was so volatile that they couldn't hold prices for more than a week. But it sounded like this price was good for 30 days. If we would like to have the rest of it fenced off, I can reach back out to them and bring something to the next meeting. I don't know that there's like a major rush to this.
I, I don't have an opinion either way. Are we okay to move forward on this? Is there a motion?
I move to approve, uh, FW Fencing Company Incorporated quote for 915 feet of galvanized fencing for $24,147.05 and to approve book from Farmers Labor LLC for a not to exceed amount of $6,500.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item 6D, the TMDL report.
All right. Yeah, um, so every year in February, we have to submit an annual report to DEQ, describing what the city is doing to, uh, limit pollutants going into stormwater. Uh, the TMDL is, stands for Total Maximum Daily Load to the, to the creek. And this is for the Willamette Basin. That's what area that, um, the city's stormwater, um, discharges into. Last year, we brought a new matrix to the council. It was the end of our five-year reporting and there was new requirements for mercury that were added. Um, you'll, you'll see a lot of them, our public education, um, just, um, informing the public of what we're doing. Um, having our meeting minutes online, having, uh, a stormwater, separate stormwater page on the website under Public Works. That was a new requirement. We've, we've done that and we've added some good information on there, like the TMDL. We've added some information about our street sweeping program, the mutt mitt locations, that sort of thing were added to the stormwater TMDL page. We try to do regular, uh, newsletter articles. Um, anything from the article about the wastewater tours that we were doing to, uh, street tree planting for temperature, cleaning up after your pet, don't over fertilize your, your yard. I think you guys have probably all seen those new newsletter articles and those are, those are some of the requirements, um, from DEQ. Some of the, the ones that councils should be, I guess, aware of and understand that staff is probably gonna bring some recommendations within the next year or so is they would really like to see, uh, funding source directed specifically for stormwater. So a lot of other cities have done a stormwater fee. Some of the things the city's doing now to try to, um, I guess, offset what eventual, what an eventual fee would look like is, is we're requiring all new development to maintain their own, uh, water quality basins. When there's any kind of, uh, development, we're, we're saying basically you guys need to set up a homeowners association and manage those facilities because they get really expensive. There was a class not too long ago that the city of Portland said it costs them, uh, $3,500 a year to do one block of the, the in gutter maintenance, um, for, like the little planting strips that you see. Like, for example, there's one on Umsville Highway by the prison. Those little set, a one-block section is costing the city of Portland $3,500 a year annually. And, uh, we have several of them out in the Hiberner subdivision that are larger, like one lot size, uh, facilities. And so it's something that costs the city a lot of money to maintain. I think our plan for that is to put together a cost as, or a cost analysis of what it costs the city to maintain those facilities throughout the year and then try to, um, split that up between all the, the residents and a, and a fee, some sort of fee structure.
Do we have a timeline on that? I know it's like, I've been aware that there's a possibility of the fee coming, but, um, not timelines, like do we have a protection of one?
So the-
I, I can jump in here if, if you want, Matt.
Sure.
So this is, this is something we actually have been talking about for about five years now. And we probably should have already implemented this fee for a couple of reasons. One, because we're behind on some of this TMDL work. Uh, but also we're, we're somewhat supplementing stormwater through our street fund. And that's not the optimal way to fund, uh, you're supposed to try to keep those separate. That's one of the reasons why, uh, DEQ is, uh, kind of, you know, putting the pressure to move us along. We've been hesitant because, um, we're, we're still got some uncertainty with the wastewater funding. And, you know, we don't, we're, we're, we're kind of just waiting out the timing of at least having some numbers for wastewater. But within the next year, we'd really like to get the stormwater, uh, utility set up and start implementing, uh, some of these requirements.
Yeah, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of really expensive equipment, like the street sweeper, the tractor truck. Those kind of things are, I think the city estate recently bought one and it was around $400,000 for a street sweeper. So trying to pull that money from a general fund or, or a street fund really limits what you can do for maintenance things in those, in those funds. The other thing that we've been finding recently as well is, um, a lot of these plans require updates by a consultant or an engineer. And, uh, these plan updates, estimates that we're getting for these plan updates are between 20 and 40, $50,000. It seems, seems crazy, but, uh, we've reached out to several different consultants, several different engineers, and that's kind of the going rate for, for this kind of work. And again, that's, that's a big hit to our, our street fund or, uh, our general fund, Parks Fund. Some of the smaller projects like tree plantings and those, those sort of things we can do out of the Parks Fund because it, it benefits the park. But when you're trying to pull that money from, from a park and a playground structure, it really, it really limits what we can do maintenance-wise. The other thing that they're, they're, by the end of our five-year cycle, so by 2028, is we have to have a stormwater ordinance in place where we have, um, a fee structure, some sort of enforcement action for, uh, developers, homeowners, anyone that, um, is caught discharging pollutants into the stormwater system. Right now, we have a nuisance ordinance that we can cite people under, but, um, again, when you go back through the matrix, that's not their ideal way of handling it. They want an ordinance in place that's gonna have, um, that enforcement action, um, in the ordinance. So, I mean, we have a water ordinance, we have a wa- a wastewater ordinance. This would be similar to that. And in the next couple of years, um, we have to develop an ordinance that's gonna fit our town and, um, implement it and have council approve that ordinance. So the, the funding part of that, the, the, um, enforcement action, those are all things that will have to be addressed at that time.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Like Ron was saying, I do think it's a good idea to wait as long as possible until we have a better idea of what the wastewater cost is gonna be, that we're not creating a new fund and then raising the wastewater fund right after that. So two things-
That's what Ron was saying, is we've been holding on to get-
That's why I was agreeing with them, yeah.
Um, guess, uh, question I have is, uh, I mean, are we having anybody that we know of now, um, that we're having to kind of, you know, enforce via our nuisance ordinance on regarding this?
Yeah, we've had a couple different, um, complaints this last year about like nuisance, uh, pet waste dumping, which as silly as it sounds, it's under, it's, it qualifies under this bacteria section of the matrix. And, um, you know, those, those ones, as many mutt mitt stations as we have throughout town, there's still, we still get complaints about people dumping waste over their fence or just leaving it. Um, and we actually, I think we had two or three last year where we, we made contact with the homeowners and said, hey, look, you know, you need to clean this up or it's gonna be a citation under the nuisance ordinance. And, um, but again, if, if someone really wanted to fight it, you know, they may have a way to fight it and we wouldn't have much for teeth, you know, to enforce those rules. So there ha- there has been a few. The other thing, uh, that we have had some complaints about, um, like when a builder is building a house and it's in the wet season and there's like mud running onto the street or those sort of things. Um, that's, that's another one. And that's another one that they're, they're hitting really hard because there's a DEQ permit for the developer, but then when the homeowner comes in to build the home, there's no permit required for the homeowner. Or there wasn't a permit required for the homeowner. Now they're, they're going that way and so we'll have to update our type A permit so that we have some enforcement action on the type A permit for, when a builder comes in after the developer's done the development, that we can, we can say, hey, look, if you're making a mess, you gotta clean it up and stop.
Um, this might be a wrong question, but, um, I'll throw it out there to staff regardless. Do we know if the cog at all is doing any work, um, in relation to this? Cause I mean, obviously, I know we're probably not the only one that, uh, the services, you know, as far as getting a consultant and helping with that.
So I can kind of talk on that if Ron wants to, to jump into, he can. I've spoke with our compliance person with DEQ and asked them, um, they, they cover our basin area. So I've asked if there's any other cities that are developing a stormwater ordinance that we could, you know, see what they're working with so that we can kind of see if that fits our city or if we need to make adjustments or something. But just having some sort of template to go off of. Um, I've already reached out to DEQ about, about that, hoping that we can find some sort of starting point that, um, we can bring to council and discuss as a group and kind of decide what's best, what fits our town.
Fantastic.
Well, I can, I can, I can jump in. We actually had a stormwater, um, system development charge and utility set up, but we, we didn't really have a plan or a funding mechanism with that, years ago, year, years ago. The stormwater SDCs, we were collecting, we had a very, um, a targeted capital facilities plan. And so we were collecting those on a limited basis and we weren't collecting them on every property. So basically, this is when we developed the need for the stormwater utility to be revamped. And that was back in 2019 and 2020 when we were doing the, uh, code updates throughout the city. And at that time, what we said was, we really need to take a fresh look at this. There's some new requirements coming. We, at the time, we had thought we would be pulled into the, uh, MPO, the SCATS, uh, Metropolitan Planning Organization. And when we get pulled into that, there's also some additional requirements, uh, that we had to meet. So that's one of the reasons we've kind of held off, uh, on developing it. But there are some templates out there, uh, and obviously our city, uh, legal counsel can, can help us with the, ordinance for the utility and the stormwater system development charger. I think what, what we really need a consultant to help us work on is what does that capital improvement plan look like? Uh, so that, that'll be part of that work that we'll have to do. But, um, you know, we do have this analysis that we're doing on our outstanding, what would be our outstanding debt for the, uh, wastewater, uh, facility. And my thought was, we try to work these concurrently so that we're not, you know, we just kind of do it in one, in one action or, or, or at the same, same time. So we're not implementing one fee increase and then putting on another fee increase. Now, the stormwater fee, typically stormwater fees are relatively small. But it is an increase, whether it's a dollar, $2, I'm not sure what that would end up being. I think some of that will depend on, on this list of projects, so if that helps answer that question.
Thank you, Ron.
It helps answer it, but it doesn't make it feel any better.
Yeah.
It's a dollar or two, but so is, you know, electricity and internet and everything else and food and kind of makes my heart sink.
Yeah, and I mean, you'll see through the, through the matrix, uh, we've been able to do some pretty, some pretty cool things this year. We, um, planted 23 maple trees along Hibern Greenway, the ones that were destroyed in the ice storm. We've replanted those and got those going. Those, those give us, you know, uh, points, I guess, towards this, that we can, we can count those. Um, the, the sewer cleaning that we did this last year, we TV'd and cleaned, um, over half, or about half of the town. 30,000 linear feet of, of, uh, collection system line were cleaned and TV'd and inspected. Again, that falls under one of the categories, um, bacteria. So, um, we were, we were able to do some, some pretty good things and, and show those in the, in the report. But, uh, yeah, just so council knows what's, what will be coming in the next year. So probably we'll, we'll be bringing some more stuff to council about this. This is really just an informal piece, um, but it, again, it's, it's one of our requirements on, on the, uh, we would bring this to you regardless, but this is one of our requirements is to have these conversations with council about what this stuff is costing and, and the direction we need to go with it.
No, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
So moving on to item 6E, and I hope I'm saying this right, uh, Cool, Cold Pepper, Cold Pepper? Old Pepper and Mini Weather Service Agreement. Uh, Ron Harding will present.
So we talked to council about the possibility of adding this event at our last work session related to community events. And, um, we spoke with the owners of the circus. I, I think council indicated they would like the city to sponsor this event. And, uh, and so we spoke with the owners. They agreed to, um, our events contract. They looked it over, thought the terms of the contract were fine. If council approves this contract, um, we'll go ahead and get it signed, lock in the event for, I believe, May 24th. And really the only financial obligation to the city, other than, uh, issuing the permit and organizing a couple of volunteers, uh, is a $290. I guess I'll call it an application fee. It's a sponsor fee. And, and the, uh, circus will come. We will help, um, distribute and sell, uh, tickets. So we'll get the word out for where people can get tickets and how much they cost. And, um, and then the city will get a percentage of those sales, which can go into our, um, you know, uh, Corn Fest, service group fund or wherever council wants to direct those, those funds to. That will be up to you. And so it should be a pretty easy event, kind of a fun event for the community with little work on our part. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer that.
I have one. Do you know if it's one show or two shows? I was looking at their website and it looked like that afternoon and then an evening show.
Yeah, typically they do two shows, yeah. And, uh, and some of it will depend, this will be our first year, so we'll have to build up, um, you know, customer base. But, uh, it's the only circus in the area this year, so I, you know, we'll, we'll reach out to the other neighboring communities. And I think- Neighboring communities and I think it'll do fairly well.
We'll be expected to probably report on this on Wednesday night, so I just wanted to make sure.
Are there any more questions? Okay, um, is there a motion?
I move to approve the Culpeper Circus Professional Services Agreement and Permit as presented by staff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, city administrator report, Ron Harding.
Let me unmute there, since I'm on vacation, I, I really don't have a report this evening, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
No, that's good, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
You deserve a vacation.
Yeah, the best report ever, Ron.
All right, moving on, number eight, mayor and counselor reports, does anyone have anything to report?
Our SCATS meeting tomorrow at noon that Angie and I will be attending.
Fell on my hips.
See if we can move that forward.
Uh, if I were mayor interview went on the radio last week, um. Well, that. Went and met with the fourth graders, to tell you, if you guys haven't gone down to the elementary school, the city counselor, you are a superhero. Uh, that's all, uh, we have the cog dinner today, Wednesday, yeah. And um, anything for good of the order? Nothing. We have no correspondence and no executive session, if you haven't had your picture taken already, please stay after and take your picture. Other than that, uh, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-six PM.